Yes, we'll go ahead and we'll open up this, we'll start this meeting. Holly has offered to offer the open prayer. Holly, you in mind?
Sure, thank you. So dear heavenly Father God, we just thank you, Lord, for this day. And we thank you, God, that we get together and get to serve you in this capacity. But I pray that you would govern every decision that we make. And I pray specifically, you know, over our community, Lord, that those that are suffering from COVID, Lord, would be well and that we would see this turnaround. And God, we just ask you to continue to, you know, just sort out this election, Lord. We pray that your will would be done and that ethically and every candidate well represented. And Lord, again, we just thank you for this opportunity and we just pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen, thank you, Holly. I'd like to first congratulate those that in the election that won, those that didn't. We appreciate your willingness to serve in the community. Holly, we'll miss you. Kathy, you're leaving for different reasons. You're going to sunnier places. But Holly, we certainly appreciate your hard work and your diligence for the community and how you represent the community and constituents. You've done a good job and you should be proud of your work and what you've done and you'll be missed. But we don't need to shed any tears at this point because you've still got work to do the next couple of months, so we'll keep you busy.
Thank you, Mike.
Has everybody had an opportunity to read and review the minutes from October 6th meeting? And if so, is there any additions or corrections? If not, uh...
I'll make a motion that... Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve them as written.
Second it. I'll second it.
Okay. Kathy, you're muted if you're trying to second anything. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying, oh, we'll just say aye on this. Aye? Oppose, nay? Well, assuming so, we'll do roll call vote going forward for the additionals and the transfer requests. Is there any mail that anybody would like to share with the council? If not, is our county attorney online? Moving forward, I'm sure we don't have any committee reports. Commissioner report. Gary, you're here representing the commissioners. Do you have anything to share with us? You're muted, Gary, if you want to say anything.
Not at this time, Mike.
Okay. Uh, there is no old business. Under new business, we're gonna skip that. We were supposed to, we're gonna interview a couple of candidates for tonight for the alcohol, the appointment to the alcohol beverage board. Uh, we're gonna forego that. I'm gonna reschedule that for a couple of weeks out. Due to some illnesses and the reason we're meeting the way we are tonight, we'll just forego that and we'll make that appointment, um, in the next couple of weeks, if that's okay with everybody else. It's gonna have to be because we don't have anybody interviewed right now. Okay, now I gotta pull up my email from Jane here because she kind of organized all of the additional appropriations and transfers. So, because we're doing this by roll call vote, we're gonna try to lump as much as we can together unless somebody's opposed to doing that, just to keep it easier on Jane so we're not, you know, doing each one line item by line item. There's an additional appropriation request for the highway department for the MVH fund for a chip box purchase in amount of $280,275. The parks department covered bridge fund, bridge evaluation, $1,964. The coroner county general fund pathologist, $18,200. The animal shelter county general fund vehicle purchase, $25,400. Would anybody like to say or add anything to that? If not, entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I'll make a motion with those amounts as you've read, Mike.
Okay, you have a second?
Second, Mike.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, we have a second. Is there any further, is there any further discussion on this? If not, we'll go by roll call vote, the additional appropriation request for the departments that were further mentioned previously. Jane?
So sorry, I did, yes, I'm so sorry, I didn't realize, I was muted. Okay, um, Kayla's not here, right? Clark?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Brockman?
He muted, Mark. His mouth said yes, I could see a lip, he just looked.
All the thumbs up, Mark.
Okay, um, Riker, Payton?
Yes.
Winta?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries, six, nothing. Okay. All right, the next is transfer requests. Okay, coroner county general fund from 2401 autopsy panel to 30951 assistant coroner, $1,000. Coroner county general fund from 20401 autopsy panel to 30401 pathologist, in the amount of $2,000. Highway department MVH fund from 30141 communication to 40420 equipment purchase in amount of $6,800. Probation department adult probation superior from 3,000, 3,090. Vehicle maintenance to 20210 gas, 300. Maintenance, keep in jail from 30452 repairs to jail to 20285 repair and maintenance supplies, $43.98, $43.98, uh, $43.98. And for 30452 repairs to jail to 20285 repair and maintenance supplies, $1,995. Cume cap development from remodeling costs to maintenance and repair jail supply, $5,000. From other services to maintenance and repair supply jail, $1,995. Highway department MVH fund from 20230 garage and motor to 30303 other services, $20. Highway department MVH fund from 20230 garage and motor to 30303 other services, $30. EMA county general fund from 30500, 3500, 30500 repair of equipment to 20290 other supplies, $163.95, and I'm not repeating that.
Make a motion to request a transfer request that Mike just read off.
To approve them?
To approve them.
Okay. You have a second?
I make a second, this is Kathy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the transfer request, as I stated earlier, that I'm not gonna repeat, uh, please do so by signifying aye through roll call vote. Jane?
Um, Clark? Rhodes?
Yes.
Dunn?
Aye.
Brockman?
He's not in his head yet.
Riker, Payton?
Yes.
Winta?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
I think Mark is on a Grateful Dead tour up there. He's like spinning the camera all around and in circles, he's upside down. He's talking to himself. Okay, moving on to 144s, Kelly, van meter, 1911.
Hmm, yes. Um, I went to the commissioners' meeting and asked for two 144s at the time. Since that meeting, I've also hired another two, so I'll have a total of four, um, 144s. And Gary, do I need to come back to the commissioners to do the other two, right?
Yes.
How many you have tonight, Kelly, for council?
Um, for, I have four total. I had only asked for two at the commissioners' meeting, but since that meeting, I had hired two more people.
Are these full time or part time?
Uh, they are all part time.
Did you say you have to go back to the commissioners? Is that what you said, Gary? So she's doing two or four?
I'm gonna do two more at the commissioners then.
She can, she can get all four approved as far as the positions tonight and then the actual names of the other two will be presented to the commissioners next meeting.
Okay.
How many would I put you at, Kelly, on part time?
Um, it would put me at, uh, nine part time.
Does this replace the part time you lost?
Some, yeah, it is. I mean, we didn't actually lose, uh, four people, but before I'd lost the one full timer to a nursing job and then I took a part timer and put it in, put him in her position, then that took me down to four part time only. So I'm just basically, I already needed help prior to her leaving, so now, since I've got all these applicants, you know, I'm gonna say that you hire four, maybe two will make it. We are in the third week of training, so it's early.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Kelly's 144s.
We have a motion to approve the 144s, but Kelly?
Mark's holding up two fingers.
I've seen that.
Mark's holding up two fingers. Love and peace.
He's on the Grateful Dead thing, he's doing peace. Okay, so we have a second, I'm gonna assume that Mark is, was his, that was his second by the two fingers. At least it wasn't the one finger.
Hmm.
Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, Michelle? And you're muted, Michelle.
Yeah, I'll have to get it off there. Um, I believe I sent all the council members 144s via email. Um, the first one that I sent is for the remainder of this calendar year and it is to fill vacant positions here, uh, that were full time positions and one new position that has been approved, uh, also. And, uh, it's for a field officer, uh, two, actually, two field officers and a facility officer. And do you want me to say their names or what? They're, but they're all current part time employees.
I don't think it's necessary to share the names.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm just trying to open them up here. Okay. So I don't have everything in front of me, but is this off of, based off of last year's salary?
It is based off of the salary schedule and I sent that to all council members also. Um, they are at the bottom's base salary with the exception of Dennis. And he, I explained in the email to you that his is 2,000 above the lowest rate for that position. He has been here part time for seven years. He's been at Union County Community Corrections for 10 as a case manager, field officer. He has certifications in IRAS and case management, so I won't have to be sending him to those schools to be certified.
Okay, so maybe we should address the salary schedule you sent first. So you're wanting us to approve this, I'm sure.
Um, you don't need to approve the salary schedule. That's already been approved by the advisory board. It's the actual salaries and everyone's salaries are within that range, the low to high.
But you're not getting any pay increases for 2020, they're all staying the same.
Correct.
So where's this extra money coming from then?
What extra money?
You, are you bumping, you're asking for pay raises, correct?
Not for these three, these are new employees, new to full time. Pardon?
On the salary schedule itself.
There was a slight increase on some of those positions, but not on all. It, that was approved at the beginning of the year by the advisory board. We redo that every two years.
As we kind of made it pretty clear that we weren't giving any, doing any raises this year for anybody.
But statute says that the advisory board sets the salaries for community corrections and that the council shall approve the recommendations of the advisory board. It's like you said in a previous meeting, you guys are basically just a rubber stamp for this department because Indiana statute says that county council has to approve the 144s.
Well, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. And what I'd like to do is wait on this salary ordinance until we get, have some time to kind of discuss it. I don't necessarily want to make a decision on that tonight. Because I don't agree with that. If we're in charge, if we're responsible for the finances of the county...
But there's no county tax dollars in this. I am completely grant funded and project income. That's the income that we make here.
Understand, but there's a problem though, the entire county is here with the COVID. We, we said, we're in a situation with another department, I know that's, of course, not happy about not getting a pay raise. And though what you're saying may have some merit to it, I would like to wait on this until we get a chance to dig into it a little bit.
Well, we've already been...
That's my, that's my opinion.
I, I know that, I respect that, but we have already been awarded our grant funding through, um, June the 30th of 2021 and all these, this is all in the budget and has been approved. So, I mean, the money's there. I did not ask even through the state for any additional funds. I have money in project income and the grants have already been awarded for the first half of 2021. So everything's been approved by my advisory board and by the state who funds us.
And this is my opinion and my opinion only, is that I would like to wait on approving, I'm looking at your, on your salary ordinance until we have a chance to talk about it a little bit. I don't have a problem with the 144s. I just want to dot my i's and cross my t's, Michelle, that's all I want to do. Just because we, because we've kind of set the precedent out there that we weren't giving pay raises to anybody. I understand what you're saying, but just understand where I'm coming from. I don't want to, you know, it's a touchy subject with a lot of employees because you and I know, and a lot of us know, on the county council, that there are different funds that supply different things. We know that. But the general public isn't always aware of how that works. And quite candidly, some of the employees in our county don't understand where these different money, monies come from. And I would just like a chance to just research it a little bit. If we have to have a special meeting this month, then I'm not opposed to doing that to get this done, if this is a time sensitive thing for you. I just would like to have a little time to dig into it, if that's okay with the council, but it's up to the council what they want to do. I'm just one voice.
Well, the 144s for the three full time hires, I need those people and Jane can tell you how bad it's been. I've been paying part time people overtime. I've got one person...
I have no problem with that, Michelle.
Okay.
I just want, I just, again, this is not, I'm not the one making the only decision here. It's just in my opinion, I'm the only one that's talking right now because everyone's muted, but, you know, council, share whatever you want to share. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm, that's fine.
Yeah, well, I've been trying to talk, but you've been talking, so, uh, I guess Mike, I don't understand, uh, the hangup because we have no control over what the state approves for their, for their salaries. It's not county tax money being used. I guess it's...
I would completely agree with you, John.
Did you guys see the email that was come out before the meeting from that letter? A little bit ago?
It was a little bit ago, no, because I've been on a medical run.
Well, I think that letter needs to be read by all council members before you make your decision. I'm, I'm kind of under the same opinion as Mike here. We need to discuss a little more because that letter kind of puts a twist on things.
It's up to you guys.
So we can deny paying...
Michelle, Michelle, would it be fair to say that you could wait on that portion a couple of weeks and, but you just needed 144s, which is really what needs to be addressed?
Yeah, and if you look on the email that I sent you on the 144s, there's two attachments. The 2020 one I need approved tonight because I need to get those people on. And the other one that's three pages is for 2021 and it starts January 1. So, yeah, we can wait and also, I don't know what letter everybody's talking about, but I'd like to have a copy of that sent to me.
Michelle, I forwarded the copy of the award letter, is what she's talking about, because somebody asked after the commissioners' meeting what, what the budget was, because you, you said, um, in the commissioners' meeting that the funding, they kept the budgets the same for the first six months. So as a response to that, I had forwarded the award letter, the email that included the award letter. So you actually are...
I'll be glad to send you again what I forwarded to all them, but it was the award letter that came from, uh, Leslie Williams, maybe was the name?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. And that's fine because the budget that went with that award letter, that award letter is for the Indiana Department of Corrections funding only. No one over here's salary is completely paid out of DOC funds. It's split between DOC funds and between project income. So any increase, and they were small increases this year, but any increase on anyone's salary came out of project income. And if you would read, which you guys don't have access to it, I cannot give raises out of grant funds. Raises have to come out of project income. So the grant funds are all the same as they were and it's, it's been past procedure every year. Raises come out of project income. And if you look at our project income balance, I have the money in there to give my staff the raises that they deserve. So I, I can't, I can pull it up on my computer and I may even have, I do have one sitting right here printed. My project income balance at the end of last month was $967,514.97. So I have the money in there to sustain my salary, the raises and salaries for my staff. In addition to that $967,000, I also have $434,000 in my CTP fund. So, I mean, we are self sustaining.
And that's what I wanted to be sure, I guess, is that, you know, this is something that can be sustained and not...
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I'm trying to prevent blowback because we've said no raises this year.
I respect that.
Because of the COVID situation and I don't want, you know, to upset anybody in the, in the, in the county employees and thinking, well, why are they getting this? And you're giving them preferential treatment and why can't you help us? Because we're, we're already gonna be facing it, we already know that. In one department, so...
I understand that, but, um, the, our workload over here has tremendously increased since August, the first the state forced us to go on the new computer system, which is like 10 years back step. So I can't even get off of my old case management system. I have to have everything entered into two. The work release portion of this case management is absolutely terrible, but if I don't use this system, they'll cut our funding. I mean, it's one, because they want to collect the data. So, I mean, obviously, I'm gonna do what I have to do to retain funding. So we're using it, we're getting used to it. There's mostly bad points to it, but a few good. But I watch my budget over here, I watch where I buy things, that's why this balance has gone up. I watch just like on supplies and services and I just changed, uh, electronic monitoring services and that alone should save me a minimum of $35,000 a year, which all of that is paid out of the project income. So, I mean, I'm looking at ways to save money all the time, but we can sustain, um, the salary schedule that's there in the raises, which they were small for 2021. I watch that every year. I don't take, I don't spend more than we take in a month. We were taking in before COVID hit, it was like 50, some thousand a month average and we're down to 35, but it's coming back up because the courts were slow and things kind of went at a slow pace, but, um, we have plenty in there to sustain what I'm asking for. I wouldn't ask for it if we didn't.
Okay. Well, council, it's your call. I mean, the 144s, I think we need to address that, obviously. The, um, other issue, I'll leave that to the council to make a decision.
Given we're available, we would love for all of our, the county employees to have a raise. The only reason that we're not is because we just don't have the fund. And I, I feel like those funds come in, they're, they're, they're not something that impact our county general. Um, and so I feel like, from my perspective, like, I don't want to punish one group of people, um, that the money's there, um, just because we can't do it for everybody. I mean, I would, I, I mean, most of the time when we discuss raises in our financial hearings, it's, we try to be as fair as absolutely possible, but it's always driven by the dollar, like what we have. We would love to give people more money, we just don't have it. And so in this case, we have it, to, to not approve it seems, um, it just doesn't seem ethical. That's my perspective.
And our project money's not our money to control, is it?
That's correct. Any of the money in my project income and CTP can only be used for community corrections with the approval of my advisory board and the state.
And you have those approvals?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm gonna go out and I'd like to make a motion to approve her 944s, the three of them, and also the salary ordinance, or salary schedule that she presented in her email.
Let's just see the 144s first.
Okay.
So...
I'll second the 144s.
John, your motion is to approve the 144s?
I'll, I'll make that motion, I thought, I thought you just...
Yeah, you just needed to amend it, that's all. He just, he had said the salary schedule too, so... So you have a motion to approve the 144s, is there a second?
Second.
Mark seconded.
I'd like to call...
Any further discussion on 144s?
I'd like to call point order, please.
Yes?
I made a motion to approve both and you can't move on unless it dies from a second.
That's what I was asking, if you wanted to amend yours.
I did not.
You, so you're wanting to approve the salary ordinance and the 144s?
Yes. Our money's concerned and I don't see a need for a special meeting.
They're two separate issues, John. They're two separate issues, John.
No.
Okay, well, let it die from a second, then, we'll go on. I'm just going by rules order.
Your second on John's motion?
I had seconded.
Okay. I'm not gonna beat this horse to the market, it's already dead. Um, is there a motion on the floor? To approve the one forty four and the salary ordinance? Roll call vote.
Okay, just, I'm gonna throw in here, salary ordinances, I believe can only be set once a year, so we can't approve a multi-year salary ordinance. I mean, the Advisory Board can, and then each year, Michelle can bring that to you guys, but you guys can only set a salary ordinance, like, you can't set salaries for three years out, I don't believe, I wish Jeff was...
It's not a salary ordinance, this is a salary schedule that has a range for each position.
I believe John called it an ordinance in his motion.
You're correct, it is.
Probably got that for me.
Yeah.
So, so I'm saying we can't call it an ordinance, because you can only pass an ordinance once a year, so if he wants to revise his motion to call it a schedule.
That's my fault. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the one forty fours and the salary schedule. All those in favor will, will roll call vote.
Okay, hang on, trying to get my minutes correct, so we're, Councilman Clark moved to approve the one forty fours and the salary schedule as presented. Councilwoman Dunn seconded that motion, okay, and a roll call vote, Nobby?
I don't wanna, I wanna abstain from voting, I didn't hear the whole conversation, I just joined, sorry.
Clark?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Riker, Peyton?
No.
Winta?
No. Two no's, and I believe it's four yeses? One abstain?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'm sure we don't have anybody from the audience that wants to share anything. If not, is there anything from the body of the council that they wanted to share with the rest?
See, Dave's on there, he may not know he's already been approved. For his vehicle. Like, they...
Did we miss that?
Dave Rickman?
Dave Rickman.
Dave, can you hear us? You were approved.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. He's a silent type. Okay, if not, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 May adjourn. Take care, everybody.
Yes.
Bye.